All right. Gil.
Okay, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
This is the regular meeting of the Town and New Canaan Board of Selectmen, Tuesday, September 22nd, 8:30 a.m. We have a quorum with Nick and Kathleen and myself, and first item on the agenda is the minutes from our last meeting held on September 8th. Any comments or corrections, or have motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Some.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
News are approved. Public comments, this is the virtual meeting on Zoom, and therefore, we will take comments from the public on agenda topics by email, which you can email to BOsdistribution@canaanct.gov, and we will read the comments whenever received until the end of the meeting. Again, the email address is BOsdistribution@newcanaanct.gov. And I actually, Tucker, do you have the that email address? I guess, I guess only Nick and Kathleen and I do. Okay, so we'll monitor, see if there's any comments. Next item on the agenda is NCTV Channel 79. Bob Dorn is here to explain the business plan for Channel 79 and to request, actually, I think Tucker, as the chairman, new, acting soon to be new full-time chairman of the TDAC Committee, will present the request for $10,000 for Channel 79 from the Economic Development Budget. So, Bob, you want to give us a few minute presentation?
Sure. Good morning. Thank you, everybody, for taking the time to listen to us this morning. As many of you probably know, I am transitioning into the leadership role at New Canaan Public Access Inc., which is the nonprofit 501(c)(3) here in town, better known as NCTV 79. And as a little background, in 1989, NCTV was started with the purpose of connecting people to community with a capital C and government, and it did that well for many years. It still does. It is currently available on cable Channel 79 and on-demand at nctv79.org. For NCTV Channel 79, I believe the possibilities are endless. The channel is a, it's a great medium for the town to show all it has to offer to both current residents and to attract new families even. We are currently undertaking to make NCTV 79 more easily accessible. We're also looking to bring high-definition quality to the channel and moving from Vimeo to YouTube, for instance, to be even more accessible for our livestreamed events and on-demand viewing for all our residents anywhere, anytime, so no matter where they are in the world. And we have some recent proof points to show for July 4th. Working with Tom Stadler, we put together a virtual fireworks since we couldn't all be together in Wavney Park, and that alone was viewed by over 600 families in town. We recently livestreamed the 9/11 Remembrance from the steps of Town Hall, and it already has over 380 post-event views on top of the live views. We have a new series funded by nonprofits and private donors called Women Leaders of New Canaan, and we just launched that a few days ago, and it already has over 100 views to date. We think these are proof points that the community will watch NCTV if we give them valuable community content and a way to easily watch anytime, anywhere. The overarching purpose to remember of NCTV is to make government and community more accessible to residents and to promote engagement. And we have a plan to rebuild the station into an even greater asset to the community with year-round programming, certainly continued government coverage and community programs with the live events like the 9/11 Remembrance I just mentioned, League of Women Voters Debates, pre-recorded programs like Staying Put's Generations Program, which actually airs today at 11:01 and 6 on Channel 79, documentaries on town residents, on events that happen in town and destinations in town. We are currently in production on two new series, a six-part health series for seniors, The Connected Mind and Body, which is in partnership with New Canaan Human Services and Silver Hill Hospital, and a 19-part interview series on women leaders in New Canaan celebrating the ratification of the 19th Amendment, which is led by Nancy Geary and the New Canaan Museum and Historical Society, and our interviewer interviewing 19 women from New Canaan is Meredith Bach. We're working on three major livestreamed concerts for the holiday season, working with the library on presentations, live theater, and of course, encore presentations of the best from years past. This is all in an effort to share the unique culture of New Canaan, engage the community, and help to position New Canaan as a destination for new families and businesses and a reason for current residents to rediscover, re-engage, and re-experience our community. No other town in our catchment area is doing this well. There's also, I believe, an important role for NCTV to play in promoting New Canaan as a place to do business and to raise families. So we'll be working with the town during budget season to support the station again next year, as it has in past years. The town pays for government coverage, and we raise private money for community programming from local nonprofits and private donors. In the meantime, and ASAP, we want to move quickly to build a new website. The current website is way, very old, many years old, and clunky and hard to use and inaccessible for people. We want to build a new website and build out the social media distribution channels. To that end, we had asked TDAC to support this effort as part of its original purpose of marketing New Canaan and recommend to the Board of Selectmen that they approve $10,000 for NCTV to correct and fix its digital channel by building out new channels from the TDAC budget. TDAC has shown financial support for October for Design and Live New Canaan in the same precedent-setting manner, so I am hoping on behalf of NCTV 79 that you, the Board of Selectmen, will see this in the same light. So, thank you, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Bob, for excellent presentation, and thank you for taking this out. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Paul Sedlak, who's been the president of Channel 79 for the past decade or more. You know, 79 is another example of volunteer volunteers making things happen in New Canaan, and you think of people like Rat Stone and predecessors who got Channel 79 running and supported it for so many years, so I'm very happy to have Bob take it and modernize it and make it, we met yesterday, Tucker and I and Tiger with Optimum, and Channel 79 is actually a service of our cable company, and I was pleasantly surprised to see that they have 7,300 customers in New Canaan. That kind of surprised me, because I was getting the impression that perhaps not as many people can access Channel 79. But I, Bob, one thing Bob plans to do is to make it accessible beyond cable.
Even for people who've cut the cord, yes.
Right.
But part of that, Kevin, if I could interject, is the other area towns that have a Channel 79, we're all part of an Area 9 Council, and we meet throughout the year to talk with Altis about the service to the town and the service we provide as a community channel.
Hey, Bob, and, you know, look, I'm tremendously supportive of this effort, the build-out, the continued build-out of Channel 79. You know, the access that this platform provides, and you just gave us some interesting numbers, is tremendous, and I think particularly in light of the pandemic, where people are looking for content, right? Anywhere they can find it, this is critically important. One, I guess one question I have is, you just mentioned an Area 9 kind of coalition. Do you guys share content? I mean, because you can never get enough content, right? We can come up with 1,000 ideas just in New Canaan to do, but I mean, is there Fairfield County-type?
So I would, two answers to that, Nick, that I'll start with. One is that, yes, you mentioned the pandemic and everyone's need to communicate, and having 79, we've been able to step in and help several nonprofits get programming out to people that otherwise they would have done live and in person. So Staying Put is a great example. Today, they were going to have their generations meeting with over 200 people. They can't have that live, so we're broadcasting that out to the community, and we'll make it available for people to see afterwards, so the greater community can understand what they do. We're working with the Beautification League and other nonprofits in the same vein. As to content sharing, it's a new thing. Since I joined 79, I reached out to the other area channels, looking for content and seeing what of our content could be made available to them, and over the last few weeks, Darien 79, and I'm working closely with Jim Cameron down there, we have shared some programs with them. We are going to be sharing some of their programs, and yes, we're talking with other communities, and we're going to be talking about some shared resources as well. What, you know, can we create programming that means the same thing to two or three communities? And then share the resources to create that. So the short answer that I gave a long answer to, the short answer is yes.
And remind me, what, if any, is the relationship between Channel 78 and 79? 78 being, you know, part of that?
78 is the educational, so every town gets two stations, the educational and the community, and I am working with Roman and Sobolski the same way I'm working with Jim Cameron to see what what in terms of scale, economies of scale, there may be available to us in the future.
Awesome.
And all this is fairly new, so, yeah.
Sure, sure. So, so, so last question. What is the, I know we're, we're going to give you, I think we're going to vote to give you $10,000 is a one-off, but what is, what is the usual annual spend by the town on Channel 79? And what's the makeup of your revenue stream as a 501(c)(3)?
So, again, everything's changing at the moment. The community side had gone more or less dormant over the last couple of years.
The community side being?
Being.
Private donations?
Not just private donations, but also community programming. So the station had become more focused on government programming over the last couple of years because of capacity. So we're working on capacity building. The town has supported the station with, and Kevin or Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but $29,500 a year for the last several years without any increase. We also have, there is in-Town Hall. We have a studio in there, a broadcast studio, if you will, where all the broadcast equipment is that allows us to serve up shows in, shows in daily time slots as we program them. So that 29.5 has been, has been the yearly for the town. And over past years, I used to be a board member there, but in years past, we held fundraisers for, to raise money to do community programming, and we were able to, I believe, as recently as five years ago, and I'd have to go back and look, but $50,000 to $60,000 privately. I can tell you that in recent months, in order to do these current shows in partnership with Jim Lisher and New Canaan Human Services and with, in partnership with the New Canaan Museum and Historical Society, we've raised several thousand dollars to cover out-of-pocket costs for production on those. So we've also have a proof point that we can go into the community and raise money, and some of the partners there have been League of Women Voters, the New Canaan Community Foundation, some private donors, the New Canaan Moms, and others who have donated money to help these programs happen. And we have other people who are verbally committing to programming to help underwrite concerts in the fall and other kinds of programming. So those are the two tracks we go down.
Yeah. Are there restrictions on advertising?
Yes. So if you think of us as under the same restrictions as public television.
Right.
So we can, so a local establishment can be a, can be a supporter, and we can put their name up. It can't be a commercial per se, but if you watch PBS at all, you can see, as long as we stay within those restrictions, and we do, I'm very familiar with PBS. I've done programming for the public stations, that as long as we keep within those guidelines, we're fine, but we can name our supporters.
Excellent. Go forth and conquer, my friend.
Thank you, sir.
Kathleen?
Bob, thank you so much. Hi, how are you? Thank you so much. I've been an advocate of Channel 79 as well, and I'm grateful for you stepping up and taking the, on the next chapter for the history of Channel 79, so thank you once again. Just one question, and actually, Nick covered it all, and you covered it in your presentation. Just curious, on the total allocation that we have for TDAC, and I know you're asking for $10,000, which seems perfectly reasonable to me. What, what is the total TDAC budget, and this part being 10,000?
And I'll let Tucker step in. I believe it's 30, but I'll let Tucker take the helm here on that, if she can.
Actually, let me answer that, because Tucker tends to think of it as the TDAC budget. It's actually the first economic development.
TDAC makes a recommendation on, yes.
I've let Tucker pretty much make recommendations from TDAC, and this was recommended by a vote of the TDAC Committee. But anyway, Tucker, you want to say more?
Well, but we are.
I think the budget last year was $30,000. We have $30,000 this year. You know, this, granted, it's just spending $60,000. They're bigger than we are, but yeah, last year, we supported several things that were related to doing some research with the interns, and we also, we also did the remind me, Tucker.
October for Design, October for Design and Live New Canaan.
Exactly.
And also the, the Land Trust.
Yes, the outdoor.
Outdoors.
Outdoor sculpture, right.
So does this use up the full amount of the annual budget for TDAC then?
Pretty much.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Is this the end of, I didn't know if we were at the beginning of, or the end of the 30. I apologize.
We're at the beginning of the next cycle.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, Live New Canaan was the realtors, and so we've done things to do outreach to prospective residents and and also to support some of the local efforts to garner publicity, and we also work with a very interesting group, Tucker, actually, that, that group of primarily women PR people that
Which one are you talking about?
The one with the, we had several meetings with the
Oh, so we, the PR, I thought you said art. Yes, we have rounded up probably a dozen PR professionals in town that do it both privately and for other nonprofits, and we've been running all of these ideas by them, obviously trying to leverage and maximize the investments, and it's been going very well. We get reports from the Live New Canaan program we, every month of their analytics, and obviously with the real estate market doing what it's doing, but it's, it's been great, and I'm happy to share any of that with you at any time.
Yes, Tucker, you have a meeting on TDAC on Thursday evening?
We do.
I think maybe the next couple of meetings, we'll have an update from you about TDAC to the, to the selection.
Okay. Happy to do that.
Any further, any further questions, Kathleen?
No, thank you.
I move to re-prove a request from, a recommendation from the Tourism and Economic Development Committee, TDAC, for a $10,000 grant to NCTV 79, as Bob Dorn described. He plans to use it to expand and modernize Channel 79. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Bob, again.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you hearing me out this morning. Thank you and your support.
Now we have on the agenda parking. The Parking Commission met last, we met on the September 10th, and you may recall, Kathleen, that we, after the restaurants reopened in June with Phase 1, we wanted to support downtown merchants and restaurants, and we had, had pre-parking in the business lots. And we have to talk about extending that free parking in the context of trying to get to a goal of free parking, as Nick has been supporting and I support. And then also, we haven't had people parking in the commuter lots since mid-March, and we have been talking about renewing commuter parking permits for November 1, but as the Parking Commission discussed and recommended, that doesn't seem to work, because no one's going to New York City. So we're talking about now January 1. We don't have to take action on that today, because I suspect we're not going to even end up with January 1, unless the world changes very quickly in November, so. So I, I wanted to mention the commuter permits, but we're not going to, the Parking Commission will meet again in November, and, and I think so in our meeting in November, we will decide whether to renew permits, which we plan to do electronically, as we did with transfer station permits, effective January 1, or perhaps put it off to March 1, or whatever seems appropriate at the time. But getting back to free parking, we have been supporting downtown merchants and restaurants with, with free parking for July, August, and September. And the question is, should we continue that? We hired a parking consultant. We met with it in August, and we're going to meet with it again in another couple of weeks. They came in and counted parking. They spent a day with a number of their people, observing how our parking works. Of course, it was August, and August is normally not a normal month for us. In the, in the world of abnormality of COVID, we had an abnormal, busy August, but now we're sort of back to normal with school back, but people are not going to New York City, so I don't know what normality means anymore. But we're going to try to study the lots again on a day in, in early October, and the goal would be to try to do what Westport and Darien pretty much do, and provide free parking downtown so people can come to, or to stores and, and restaurants and not have to pay, because they pay a lot in taxes, and we don't raise a lot of money through the, the business lots for shoppers. We do, we, we want to try to find a way to charge people who work downtown, as we have business permits now, annual business permits in the three lots, or four lots, three lots. And so we're trying to figure out parking. This is kind of a discussion today. I would like to take a motion on whether we should extend parking into October, perhaps through the end of the year. I don't have a specific recommendation, but and Stacy Miltenberg, our parking bureau or department, whatever we call it, director is with us, and so what are your thoughts about parking?
Well, you know, Kevin, as you mentioned, I've been a strong proponent of of free parking, you know, downtown, as, as you mentioned, some of our competitors, Westport and Darien do, and I just think it, it, I think, I think for the average consumer who wants to go downtown and shop and eat and dine and such, it isn't, it isn't so much the cost, it's more the hassle. I mean, for some people, it is the cost, for sure, but it's just more, more like, oh, gosh, you know, I've got to park my car, remember my number, go to the machine, you know, pay, pay for it, and then I'm on the clock, and I got to worry about, you know, going overtime. Again, we would, the free parking would still have limits on the time allowable to park, whether it's two hours or two and a half hours, and can be discussed, but I, I am in favor of continuing this. I think the pandemic has, has shown that even more importantly, given the pandemic, this is, this is something that, you know, we should do going forward, and I'd be in favor of continuing this, frankly, through the end of the year.
I think that's what the Parking Commission discussed, Stacy.
That is correct. Yes, they, since we are approaching the holiday season, and during the holiday season, November, December, we do offer free parking around the peak times. So the Parking Commission did recommend that, since we are approaching that time period, that it would be good to extend the free parking through the end of the year, as with the permits.
Right, and Stacy, remind me, what, how, how long do you get to stay for free in a given spot?
Right now, it's two hours, because the, yes, the streets are, are the free parking, so it's two hours consistent throughout the town.
But I, we're not, we're not monitoring the business lots, are we?
No, no, we're not monitoring any of the lots. So basically, right now, anybody could stay all day if they park in the lots.
Kathleen, do you?
Yeah, just, thank you, everybody. You mentioned, Kevin, business permits. Have they been postponed as well, or do they, are they still active? The new business?
We haven't done the renewal for this year, just like commuter permits.
We have not. Okay, all right, and is that?
How many total business permits do we have, like 50?
Total business permits?
Yeah.
Oh, um, no, two, probably close to about 400, 450?
400, 400?
Yes, there's two 27 in Central School, 98 in Locust, 36 in both, sent, uh, 36 in Morse, 36 additional in Park, and then another 21, so up close to about 400.
I think, Kevin, maybe what you're asking is, how many did we offer for the the local businesses in the Park Street Lot, and in the, and that was 50 in Morse Court?
That's what I was thinking, but I forgot.
Oh.
Central School Lot does have a lot of $100 a year permits, and we haven't renewed those, so the, you know, that could be a separate topic of consideration, because people are working downtown. And go ahead, Stace.
Oh, no, somebody was coming to the door. I'm sorry. The one thing I do want to, with Kathleen, I'm, I'm not sure, but no, we did not extend the business permits right now. It's working the same as commuters, but just keep in mind, if you do decide to implement renewals for the businesses, if we keep the lots free, business people will still have a tendency to park in there as well. They won't utilize their permits right now. I'm sorry, might have got off track a little bit.
One thing we did to mitigate the loss of revenues was we, we sort of laid off, but then rehired in, in the Parks Department or Highway Department of Parks. Our fourth, our fourth full-time employee, who, whose primary job was to, to monitor the commuter lots.
Correct.
And, and therefore, that full-time salary and benefits is mitigating our loss of revenues. But, you know, so there's a big hole in our budget with, with respective parking revenues, but you can't do much about that with respect to commuters, and we consciously decided to subsidize and support our downtown merchants and restaurants with the, with the rebooting in the summertime. So I don't, I don't look at this so much as a revenue thing, as to how, how we get to a strategy of charging people who work in town to park, ultimately charging commuters again when they start to return to Manhattan, and in the meantime, try to figure out how we get to free parking for people who are just going downtown to shop or have lunch.
Okay, so just, just one more follow-up question, just so I make sure I understand. So we have commuter parking permits. I get that. We're going to suggest that we defer that. We have business permits. They've also been deferred. We've not asked for any renewals thus far, the $100 business permits. Okay, and, and the, and the 400 or so businesses that have those permits, the people that work in those businesses, when it was in normal times, did they actually, in addition, pay for their daily parking somewhere? If they were not, obviously on Elm, if they were in Morse Court or what have you, was that on top of the business permit?
If they, if they chose to park in those lots, yes, they would have had to. So let's say somebody who had a Central School permit, okay, chose to park in the Morse Court Lot and utilize those spaces, they would have to pay.
Okay, okay, and so maybe we have to, for a future discussion, perhaps, it'd just be interested to know how that works with the, you got the permit, and then you've got the workers themselves on top of that. And then we have the, the third area, if I, if I can imagine this, is our, our residents, the users of our restaurants and, and shops and so forth, and that, again, is a separate category. So, and maybe for a future meeting, just be interested to see the components and how they have previously contributed to our town revenue. That would be helpful.
Yeah, we, we did a study last year. Bob Matili actually did the study and has all the data for last, for last year before COVID.
Okay.
And Bob just handed me a, a list of the business permits. I didn't realize we have 98 in Locust and 227 in Center. The other, rather newish ones were in Park and Morse Court, and the telephone lot has always, always been permits only.
Correct.
So, so with that, I mean, again, I think the actionable item now is to extend the free parking into October and for the rest of the year for the business lots. I don't propose we take action today on commuter, commuters, because I don't know what the answer is. I suspect we should begin to pay, renew the business lots effective January 1. We could even, we could even, if we wanted to, decide to do it November 1, because people, but then it's going to put an increased burden on us to monitor the lots. But, so Stacy. But, so Stacy. Yeah, I suppose the, we also have a choice as to what, with the recommendation of the Parking Commission, what to charge. Because in some respects, business people, if they renew their, they have been paying, they have been parking. So we're going to prorate commuters once we decide what the start date is based upon an annual, annual amount that we already have looked to approve. But business lots, we can treat differently in terms of what we decided to charge for the balance of the year until next July 1st. So I, I think we need to do some more homework in, in, in September, October here on the business permits and decide whether to renew them prior to January 1 and, and what, for what amount. And so I propose right now, I would make move that we extend the free parking in, in the, in the business lots for meter, meter purposes through the end of the year.
Excuse me, Kevin, um, just to, and, and that, just to make a, a point again in regards to business permits. If we're extending the free parking to the end of the year, which I'm in agreement with since we're approaching the holiday season, if you are looking to possibly do the renewals, and forgive me if I'm incorrect with this, but possibly do the renewals for the business permits starting November 1st. Keep in mind that with hope, we would hope that the business or employees would utilize their permits and park in the designated, their designated permit lots. But unfortunately with the, the free parking in the public lots, they might still continue to utilize it. So just keep in mind that you might want to just kind of renew everything or look at possibly renewing and starting everything up at the beginning of the year. Just a thought to put out there, especially if we are thinking about extending the parking to the, the free parking to the beginning of the year.
You're basically saying, let's not talk about doing the business permits separately from renewing the, the.
A simple way to put it, correct, yes.
I still would be surprised if we are charging commuters starting January 1. I, I suspect it'll be unfair to ask them, unless we go on, on some kind of system where they're paying, not for the balance of the six months, but they are paying for what they use. And I, so we, we have to study how we're going to get commuters back to charge paying based upon what they actually plan to use.
And, and in that regards, at, on the first of the year, if we want to revisit commuters, yes, we can do that. But renewing business while still keeping the free parking, you have to keep that in mind. As well. So yes, my, my point would be to hold everything off until the first at least.
Right. Okay, with that, I would move we extend the free parking in the business lots. I should say the, the meter space, we're, we're extending free park, free meter parking through the end of the year, through December 31st. Do I have a second?
In a second.
Further discussion, Kathleen?
Yeah, can I ask that we just come back? I'm going to go, I'm going to go ahead and prove that. But on the business permits, again, I sort of view that, I, I understand Stacy's a very valid point. But I, I almost view those as two separate things, certainly because there's, we're going to be extending free parking in the metered lots for everybody. Presumably that somebody who works in, in any particular shop would be possibly taking advantage of that. But the business permit, as I understand it, and I, I need to dig into this a little bit more, but is, is it $100 per year per business? Is that it, Stacy?
There is per lot. Would be annually 150, Locust 429, the premier spots 430, 438. So that's how it works.
I understand. Okay. And so I, again, I, I think I respect all of our businesses and I understand that this is, these are unprecedented times. But I think that they are taking advantage of, as, as we offer all of our parking services. Not quite sure why we wouldn't still apply the same business permit fee, if you will, regardless of where they park, but applying what services that we do provide. I just think I want to dig into that a little bit more, understand that a little bit more. Again, I'm not saying that I'm against offering the metered lots for, for free extended to January 1st. I think I want to understand a little bit more of the services that we provide for our business services for parking fees.
There's also a separate group of spaces in the Playhouse Lot and I think the Locust Lot where people can have, have an extended daily fee.
Yeah.
But five or six hours that they're permitted on Playhouse and.
Play, you have a section six hours and both Locust and Center are eight hours.
Right. So we, we have a whole hotspod of different policies. But enforcing them, when, when you have a lot of people who are intended for free parking around them gets to be a nightmare. So it's in some sense, Stacy's really saying we have to be somewhat simplistic.
Right. And Stacy, I have a question with, in, in Darien and Westport, so free parking downtown and, but there is no monitoring of hourly usage in, in terms of, so you can go down to Westport and park all day if you want without fear of, of, you know, having a limit on the amount of time, two hours, three hours, four hours to stay, is that correct?
In Westport?
Westport, Darien.
I think, I think both Westport.
No, I, I, I believe both Westport and Darien. I, I won't speak totally on Westport, but I believe at least in Darien, their timed parking is monitored.
Okay, so.
I'm going to say Westport works the same way, otherwise you are going to have the same problem as we would encounter where you would have employees parking all day in prime, primaries.
Now, I'm not, I'm not talking about employees, I'm talking about the average citizen, Joe, Joe and Mary citizen.
I, I do believe timed parking is monitored. I know definitely in Darien it is.
In Darien, three hours in, in Westport on the street.
And I know we're not doing that now, which I think is, is, is fine given the circumstances. But ultimately my, you know, my, my, my thought always was that there would be free parking downtown, but it'd still be a, a limit on the amount of time you could, you could stay. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so Kathleen, we'll get, we'll get the, the analysis that we did last year and that, and so we have some better semblance when we vote again as to the revenues we're losing and what the best approach is. And again, this, this parking consultant's coming in and we'll have further advice from.
And Kathleen, if you ever want to stop down, we could.
I will. Thank you, Stacy.
So with that, I'll, I'll take a vote, all in favor of extending the parking for meter spaces through the end of December?
Aye.
That's unanimous? Okay, thank you. Moving back to the agenda for the painting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, all of you, buddy, morning. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so the first one, what can do for approval is a change order on a painting contract that's currently in place with Aladdin Services. Kathleen, I don't know if you were here in July or heard this one that was approved. So we had five locations, painting services approved for a contract total of $96,875. Unfortunately, we did have money in the budget to do some work on the wastewater plant, the sewer district, which got overlooked when it got to me because I don't always get the sewer district's budget. So, so we'd like to add as a change order, we really feel this is a fair price. We had $24,000 in the budget and Aladdin Services is going to do the work for $16,725. So we'd like that approval as a change order to the current contract so that we can continue with this work.
Bill, my question is, is this coming from the general fund or the, the major capital reserve for the wastewater treatment plant?
This is, well, it's the sewer district, so however they draw monies down out of the sewer district, maybe Tiger might know best how that money is taken out of.
I'm on the sewer reserve, Kevin.
Okay, so that we, we're approving the contract or we're approving the addition to the contract or the reallocation of the contract. But the actual expenditure will come from, from the wastewater treatment plants, reserve, capital reserve fund rather than from the, well, painting is sometimes maybe not a capital expenditure, but anyway, that's kind of a detail on budget purposes. But any questions on, for, for Bill on the painting project for the wastewater treatment plant?
None here.
What color, Bill?
Well, you can go down and choose whatever you like, but whatever colors there, we tend to stay with the same colors because no one will complain about that. We don't get a whole big audience out to sewer plant anyhow, so.
We are painting the tunnel annex and we've, we've landed on a color that we think will be more palatable to people downtown than, than the current yellow.
This is, is it interior or exterior paint?
Interior work, it's the control building inside the hallway, some of the offices and then the post treatment building where all the pumps are. So we're trying to do all the building portion of it. As we get through it, we'll see how we do. I don't know if Jimmy's going to want to try to paint any of the other pumps and equipment in there. I'll have a conversation with him about that when we get there.
And, and Aladdin is actually the current.
Yes.
Provider for all the other contracts that you have.
Yes, yes, they are, and they've been doing work for us for several years now. Wonderful company out of Stanford, they do excellent work. Zero complaints from anybody on their, their finished product.
Sounds great.
I move that we approve a change order for the contract with Aladdin Services for $16,725 plus a contingency for a total of $19,225 for painting at the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, heating systems, Bill's at you too?
Yes, me too. We'll do these both at once, they're so similar in nature. So the, we went out to bid for the boilers for both the Carriage Barn and the Powerhouse. The Powerhouse currently has two boilers, Carriage Barn has one. They both were installed in 19, in the mid 1970s over 45 years ago and they're, they're definitely tired, they're not efficient at all. The Carriage Barn one's a little oversized since 1970s. When we put the roofs on a couple of years back, we actually started, we insulated there's the roofs and stuff, did some insulation work. So the buildings are nice and a little tighter, a lot tighter than they were. We received two bids, one from Eastern Mechanical and one from Radic Combustion. Eastern Mechanical Services is a wonderful company, they used to do a lot of work for us years ago, 20 years ago, 15 years ago. I'm glad to see they're back participating, they grew their company, they do want, they do great work. So we'd like to, to you folks to approve their, their contract so they can, we get these installed hopefully before the winter really sinks in. We, we will be doing redundant system at the Carriage Barn, we're taking the one big one out, putting two smaller units in there. It's nice to have redundancy so that you don't need two boilers running when it's fall and spring, real cold weather, you have them both running. And if one were to fail for some reason, you always have the redundancy of not freezing the buildings, so having one, keeping the building safe.
Are these steam or hot water?
These are hot water.
Okay, and they're in the budget, so I move we approve the contract with Eastern Mechanical Services for two heating system, boiler systems and pumps for the Carriage Barn and the Powerhouse Theater. $68,240 for the Carriage Barn and $47,495 for the Powerhouse Theater. Do I have a second? Further discussion?
Just to confirm, are these are capital budget items or operating expense? Yeah, capital. And, and forgive me, I should not, is this, are they oil or gas or both?
They, they are oil, there's no gas up in that area. If we do get gas in the future, we can always turn your burners off for gas and still run these as a high efficiency, so the trouble might.
Likely we're going to bring gas, natural gas to Waviny House and that complex because of the distance from the main gas line. We're hopefully going to bring it to Lapham Center and to the pool, but bringing it all the way to Waviny House would be a major expense.
Okay, it's at least a half a mile of piping to get to the house or the powerhouse, so it's, it's a little cost prohibitive. But as Kevin mentioned, we're trying to get it to the pool, the Paddle Lodge and Lapham Community through, uh, because it's President 106 in Lapham, so we can come through the woods, get it to the, get it to those buildings.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor? unanimous, thank you. Bill, you have lighting project as well for the town hall?
Yes, we do. Again, Kathleen, I'll give you an update on this. A few months back, we, we had money in the budget, we approved two smaller projects, one for the Highway Department and one for the Firehouse to upgrade their lighting. And they're building go-to LEDs, energy efficient. The energy efficient fund has a incentive and currently, since COVID started off, they doubled their incentive. They're trying to promote work out there, keep the economy going, which is great, a lot of money in that fund and I'm glad to see that we're finally going to use a little bit more of it. The, in the, in the past, we typically would budget for the offsets for the towns portion of it. But there's always been the opportunity to do 0% financing through Eversource. They'll do up to 48 months. In this case here at Town Hall, all the lights now are going on six years old and we certainly had some problems, lights are burning out, what have you. And it's, we're, we're expected to change light bulbs in the building only because of where they are and how to get to them. And the fact that we have to have electricians do the work because their line voltage going to every unit. So that being said, we had the efficient lighting and maintenance come down, we did an audit on the building and it falls nicely into the program. They did double our incentives. There's about, approximately about a 36-month payback on this. So we'll still be cash positive every month, so the payments come out of the bill. We'll have a few extra bucks in there savings for us. And at the end of the 36 months, we'll reap the full benefit of savings. And these are LEDs, they're going to last a lot longer than the current lights that we have, these compact fluorescents. So we think it's a good project and we'll be saving. What I have in here, savings are approximately, I'm sorry, 14, well, almost $15,000 a year they're projected to save us. Now, that's on the electricity, just know that, we know delivery rate, we've seen electric bills lately, everything's been going up. So I'd be very happy if we could be flat with all these changes going on.
Okay, any questions for Bill?
How long is it expected that these, I, I was actually kind of surprised that we didn't have LED lighting since from six years ago when we. That sounds a surprise. And then the second is how long will these new LED lights last?
Okay, well, that's a good question. Lots changed in six years with LED lighting and we did look back, we did look at it back in 2015 and 14, we were designing the building and it just wasn't quite there yet, it was very expensive back then, now it's the other way around, it's come down quite a bit. These, these lighting units should, they, they claim 20,000 hours. We're getting up there, a lot longer than the compact fluorescents. They have approved them tremendously and they have, they've actually, since 2015, you actually can get color changes now so that we can actually get an eye for daylight, which the older ones were like a yellow, it wasn't, it wasn't user friendly. So again, they are, they are claiming 20,000 hours out of them, so. And they're inexpensive to replace when that does come.
Thank you.
So I move we approve a contract with efficient lighting and maintenance to remove and install energy efficient light fixtures at Town Hall for a total net cost $41,046.19 and we're going to finance this through Eversource?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Back to Tiger? Morning Tiger? You're on mute.
Good morning, excuse me. The, what we're looking to do is to approve a contract with Hussey Brothers Excavating for a total amount of $26,728. It's for the removal and reinstallation of the concrete block retaining wall at the transfer station for our construction debris and brush areas. The contract is for $19,000 with Hussey Brothers. We have to purchase the block from ONG for $6,720. We've added a contingency of $1,800 for a total project of $26,728. The funds are available in the 2021 tax-supported capital for the transfer station at a budgeted amount of $27,500. The wall was originally installed back in 1998 when the landfill was capped. It's gone through a couple of repairs and existing blocks are starting to degrade and it's in need of replacement, removal and replacement.
Really call these blocks Tiger?
They call them. They call them mafia blocks. Because the concrete shoes.
Okay, this is the mafia wall. Any questions, Tiger?
No.
I move we approve a contract with Hussey Brothers Excavating, who we know well, for twenty-six thousand seven twenty-eight for a rebuilt containing wall at the transfer station.
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you, Tiger, on that one.
Thank you very much.
Remnants of belief much?
That's correct. We went out to bid. We received one quote from Laney Construction for nine dollars a yard. We'd like to sell back two thousand yards at nine dollars a yard for a total revenue of eighteen thousand dollars. We've been selling our mulch back since about two thousand and nine. And we've sold about sixteen thousand yards to date and received about a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in revenue. Laney's kept his price at nine dollars for the past couple of years. We need to remove the material because we're going to be starting our leaf collection October twenty-sixth, which will run through Thanksgiving. So we need to vacate the area. And this is a nice way to generate a little bit of revenue for us.
And and as Tiger could explain, you know, we, it would cost us a lot more to ship the leaves out of town than to compost them and then, and then make the compost available to residents and also sell off the remainder, so.
Right, it's a, it's, it's actually cost prohibitive to, to package it up and sell it or to to ship it away. It's not even selling, it'd be more shipping it away. And it's quite more expensive than it is to just compost it ourselves, give off to our residents, keep some for ourselves. This is actually the surplus. We're actually keeping what we need for our purposes and then what we will be giving to the residents for early next year. But it's a four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollar venture if we were to actually ship everything out of town, just the disposal costs alone. That doesn't include the, the, the work for our staff.
We actually have the town of Darien ask if they would, if we'd be interested in taking their leaves and Tiger says that wouldn't be smart for us, but.
We don't have enough room, to be honest with you. We just wouldn't be able to, to, to take it, unfortunately.
So any further questions for Tiger?
Not here.
I move we approve the contract with Laney Construction to sell them up to two thousand cubic yards of composted leaf mulch for nine dollars per cubic yard. Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
The legal fees are on our tablets. Thank you, Tiger. Legal fees are on our tablets. Any questions about the legal fees? I move we approve the legal fees as presented on our tablets.
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, there's tax overpayments primarily automobile. Any questions about the tax overpayments? I move we approve the tax overpayments for real estate and automobiles on our tablets.
Second.
Second discussion, all in favor? There are a handful of contracts under ten thousand dollars. I would point out one thing here, like I forget the word that is being used, but there's a bit of a quirk in our purchasing policies so that a couple of these represent sort of blanket contracts because we, we bring these contractors in periodically. So am I characterizing this correctly, Tiger and Bill? So.
Yes.
Whenever we see, whenever you see a ten thousand dollar amount, it's probably going to be of that nature because really our contracts, the exact amount, ten thousand dollars. Any questions about these contracts?
Not here.
Nope.
Bring this to Selectman's comments and I would note, I may do an out call tonight once we have further information, but a bubble has burst and we have, the superintendent has notified parents. We have a handful of young positive COVID cases, one under ten years old and one under ten years old. And I think we have a couple out of town, at least one, maybe two out of town college kids. And I suppose it was inevitable, as the superintendent said, because other school districts are beginning to have some positive cases with the the school age children. We're still doing contact tracing. We want to try to make sure we understand as much as we can about these new cases. And other than that, I'm not sure I have anything else to mention, but Nick or Kathleen, do you have anything?
I'm just, just two things. One, on the testing, do we have any plans in the near future to do townwide testing or schoolwide testing?
Not right now, although the superintendent has an agreement with the Stanford Hospital to stand up testing if he is, he wants to.
Okay.
And and otherwise testing is, I was just reading this morning, Stanford advocate, the testing is very available in Connecticut in general. And so although the CDC did change their policy to, to recommend testing of non symptomatic people. But I just don't think we see a purpose right now in doing more generalized testing.
Okay. And and then second thing, and I've gotten a number of inquiries, just as a follow up to the study we are doing on pesticide usage on park athletic fields, just want you to know that the draft has been shared with Tucker and Tiger and John Howe. And they'll be getting their feedback back to me and then we'll have a final to share with you. And hopefully in two weeks, we'll discuss it at the next board of selectmen meeting.
Okay. Do you have anything? Nick?
No, nothing here, Cap.
Anyway, we have, we have, we have more items on the agenda. It's the third page of the agenda. I think I caught that. Item fourteen on the agenda. Usually that's the last item on the, on the agenda. Part-time employees. So the Board of Finance has given the town clerk full support to do what she needs to process out ski ballots and the town clerk is in need of hiring part-time employees. And this is going to be a bit open-ended as we go into October because she's starting with initially, there's a list that Cheryl, do you want to present this and be more sensitive than I am?
I know that she had passed a list on to Tom to give Kevin approval to hire part-time workers on behalf of the clerk. We are waiting for some forms so that we can get them on to payroll. I don't know.
So the point here is that part-time employees, you know, we had the IRS come in half a dozen years ago and say we couldn't give stipends to bring people on as part-time employees. The only exception to that is to, is to poll workers on the day of the, of the for the registrar voters have a pool to pay poll workers for one day. In this case, because there's a combination of people that are being brought on newly and people who are working part-time in other parts of town hall, specifically the registrar's office, the rate that people are paid will vary depending upon which category they're in. So when it says sixteen to twenty-three dollars, I think it's really, you're going to either be at sixteen dollars, twenty-three dollars. If you're being borrowed from another unit that's paying people twenty-three dollars. And also, rather than bringing back each individual, we're asking that the the selectmen authorize me to approve additional hires by the town clerk as we go into October because we may need a total of, of like sixteen. I think right now she's planning on eight. Oh, that's ordinarily, we we need the authority to be able to do this on the fly as we go through October. Kathleen?
So I see, I see the list actually on our tablets here. It looks like there's twelve. Are these positions posted for employee, you know, people to apply to these positions?
No, this is not posted.
Do we, do we typically have postings for part-time positions?
We do.
Okay. And what, how does this compare to other towns of similar size in terms of voters? I, I, I'm getting significant a number of calls or comments from League of Women Voters, volunteers. We are a community of many able volunteers and are they, are volunteers being considered to help out with this at all?
Have a jump in?
Cheryl, yeah. Yeah, you, you understand as a, as a separately elected official, the town clerk runs her own show. I mean, this first elected or the you know, they, she adheres to town personnel policies. But, but we really we don't tell her what to do because she's a separately elected official. So she's decided she wants to have hired personnel and she's to have more consistency. I think there's a listing there of the people initially that are, there's five Democrats, five Republicans and two unaffiliated voters. And I, Cheryl, I, I do think Cheryl's checked with some other towns, some other towns are using volunteers as opposed to hired employees, but this is a big job to get this done in a very, very, and they have to be trained and and reliable and.
No question. Not questioning that at all. Yeah, understood.
Cheryl, is there a pending question from Kathleen about volunteers?
No, I think you answered it. The volunteers are not being utilized. Is that right?
Correct. So I move we approve a resolution that says resolve that the first selectman is hereby authorized to hire part-time workers on behalf of the town clerk as needed to assist the town clerk with EPC ballot process from the, for the November third presidential election at an hourly rate of sixteen to twenty-three dollars per hour. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Discussion?
Just to confirm, are we, this is the number? Do they have to come back if they want to hire more or this is an open end?
No, the idea here is that the initial list you have and then as Claudia, you know, next week says I need two more, I will authorize two more. Especially because the Board of Finance gave full support to, to her needs to, to get the job done.
Okay. No further questions?
All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Part-time salaries. So the, our new emergency operations director and deputy emergency operations director will be paid and we are entitled under Homeland Security program to be reimbursed for a portion of the emergency operations director and deputy emergency operator director, part-time salaries. So Cheryl has, can answer further questions on this?
What's the level of reimbursement?
Ten, ten thousand one hundred and eighty-eight per year.
Based on our population, apparently.
For each, for each position?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's in total?
Total.
Okay.
We thought it was fifty percent. Turns out that the, they do it based upon population, so somewhat less than fifty percent. And since they're newly paid the selectmen must approve the salaries. They're not in any, they're not in any budget currently.
Yeah, look, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I mean, I, you know, the EOC's job has always been time consuming during those periods of storms and blizzards and such, but given COVID, which unfortunately will be with us. I don't know, forever. This job has become even more important. These two jobs have become even more important than, more important than ever. So I think that having a salary, recognizing the overwhelming amount of time that the job requires these days is, is appropriate. And the fact that we can get some reimbursement from the federal government is, is a, is a good thing.
Actually, I, I made the point that the emergency management jobs are actually full, full-time throughout the year jobs because there's a lot of planning involved.
Right.
The, the incidences of a storm may come up for two or three days of intense coverage with the whole EOC team. But the, the, the need to attend monthly meetings over in Bridgeport, as I do as representative for the entire Region One Emergency Management Group. And we are having every other week phone calls right now, the need to have planning exercises, training exercises. So there's a lot to do throughout the year. And so it's not just the intense hours, which turned out to be a week in the case of I can't even say the name anymore, the last storm. But so I, I think this is, it's appropriate, just like we pay our medical advisors part-time salaries and so I think it's appropriate and it's nice to have the federal funding available. So I moved to approve the part-time salaries of twenty thousand dollars for the EMD and fifteen thousand for the deputy EMD. And again, both of them are highly trained and, and have been terrific volunteers for the fire department and for the ambulance corps. And we're thrilled to have the talent to do this job for us. Do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Kathleen, second. And the discussion?
Just one clarification on the agenda. It says state grants. Is it federal grants? Just want to make sure it's right for the minutes.
It's federal money that comes through the state. Like a lot of the, a lot of the federal dollars are sent to the state and then they allocate them. So it's a state grant.
Got it. Thank you.
And so all in favor? Unanimous. We have an employee transfer from the highway department to the transfer station. Michael Shiano. Cheryl, do you want to mention this or?
Yes, we had an opening. We did post it internally. We had one employee put in for that. Tiger and I interviewed him. And we would like to recommend Michael Shiano, who will transfer from Public Works to the transfer station as a transition operator. He is since two thousand eighteen, very reliable employee. And I know Mozy will miss him. But I think he will work very well over at the transfer station.
Built in when the, when the previous staff member was on vacation or sick, he would fill in for this position. So he's done nice work there. Donnie Smith recommends this, the transfer. Cheryl mentioned Mozy will miss him, but on the transfer from the highway to, to the transfer.
Any questions? I move we approve this employee transfer.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Now we're going to go into executive session for a personnel matter. Shall I read this, Cheryl?
Yes.
Personnel matter concerning employment, performance, evaluation, suspension or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Consideration invoked on possible action concerning the town employee Steve Stewart. I'm going to ask that Tucker and Tom ask our non, actually, I'm sorry, who's staying in for this executive session besides Cheryl?
Tiger will be here.
Okay, so Cheryl and Tiger will stay with us. Otherwise, thank you all for joining us today and have a good day. I move we go into executive session?
Second.
And I have John Howe here who will join us too.
John Howe also. All in favor going into executive? John Howe also. All in favor going into executive session? That's unanimous. We will go into executive session at nine forty. And we come out and vote Cheryl in public, but we will. And we're not going to record our executive session. Correct?